Good evening. Welcome to the May 3, 2017 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since 5:30 discussing the school district interview process as a result of an RFP we issued and the superintendent's evaluation. We'll start with the Fledgeable Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any Pink Students here tonight, participation in government students this evening? Okay. Your requirement is if the meeting goes till 9 o'clock, we'll take a break at 9. You'll need to come up and sign out at the sign-out sheets, and if you have any forms that need to be signed by board members, we'll do that at that time. If the meeting gets done before 9, just come up at that time. Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Christine Beck.
Michael Cooper.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Lynn Lenhart.
Jonathan Fishbein.
And Judy Keel.
And Ms. Cunningham is not here due to a work commitment, and Ms. Witschinger is ill this evening. Next is the approval of the minutes of the April 25, 2017 Special Board Meeting. First and second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstention? That item carries. Next, Student Senate Report. Do we have a member of the Student Senate?
My name is Corbin Balzan, and I'm one of the co-presidents of Student Senate. So Student Senate is currently running two main events. The first being a food drive. Boxes were distributed to homerooms Monday, and we're giving incentives out this year for the first to complete their box and the one to complete the most boxes. So this morning, we actually had our first box returned after just two days, and now we're waiting on our most boxes completed. This food will go to our backpack program, which is for local families in the community, and so we hope to get a lot of food through that. Second would be our blood drive. We're having a representative come to our Student Senate meeting next Wednesday, and we will pick a definite date and kind of go through the logistics of running the blood drive. This will be our annual spring blood drive, and we usually have a very high participation rate. That is all.
Thank you.
Any questions? Can anybody do the blood drive?
Yeah, anyone from Bethlehem, students, or parents, or anyone outside can participate in the blood drive.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Superintendent's Report. Ms. Monroe?
Thank you. So I'd like to recognize some students this evening. We do have some groups here. I see some have their team shirts on. First, I'd like to announce some congratulations to Stage 700 and B.C. students involved in this year's musical production, The Wizard of Oz. Show was nominated for five awards as part of the first-ever High School Musical Theater Awards for the Capital Region, which was sponsored by Proctors and the Times Union for the best musical, for the best, we won for the best musical, the best actress, Mackenzie Koch, best actor, Jack Mastriani, best student orchestra, and best set construction. There is an article in the Times Union that was out today. I'd also like to recognize Senior Ella Goodwin, who was nominated and selected for the first ever Youth Award for the South End Children's Cafe. Again, we found that out today. Ella's being recognized on June 1 for her outstanding volunteerism, kindness, and care shown to the children and families served at the South End Students' Children's Cafe. Also, last week, we had some students and a teacher honored by the YMCA. The event was hosted by the Bethlehem-Gilderlin and Albany branches of the YMCA. Seven Capital Region school districts participated in this ceremony. Our teacher, Mike Mitchell, was one of only three area educators to be honored for his community service, and we also had several student honorees that were recognized as well: Eva Castagna, Lindsay Stento, Olivia Pouse, Margaret Sweet, Dahlia Earlywine, Annika Rowe, Josh Hauser, Corbin Balzan, Jennifer Ansong, and Emily Weiner. It was a really nice event. It was a breakfast. They had a great speaker, and it was a nice recognition for our students. At this time, I'd like to represent our, or invite our History Bowl team. We're going to recognize them. And do you want to have a couple board members stand up and have them? Okay. So our History Bowl teams have done very well the last few years. So our most recent History Bowl competition, last weekend, two teams of students from the Bethlehem Central Middle School competed at the National History Bowl Tournament in Arlington, Virginia, and our results were very impressive. The students competed against other qualifying teams from all over the United States. While the BCMS teams were comprised of students in grades 6 through 8, most of their competitors at the National History Bowl were 9th and 10th graders. It's an incredible accomplishment for these students. I'd like to congratulate the entire history club for their hard work in reaching national level competition and making B.C. proud. So if you could come on up, as we call your name, for our first-place winners, Caleb Els, Daniel Midendorf, Connor Riley, and Griffin Roder. Stay up here for a photo, boys. Want a group photo? Right here? Okay. And a few other for the History Bowl team finalists who had competed earlier: Samuel Cooper, Michael Fishburne, Ben Goldberg, Aaron Matterpath, and Vincent Rigney. If you could come on up. Okay, there's one more slide. So Alan Choppy? Didn't I just? Oh, Daniel Midendorf? Okay. Sam just arrived, Samuel Slurs. And I also have to recognize Mr. David Cooper, who helps organize the team every year. So Dave, do you want to come on up for a picture?
You need them condensed. Can you guys come slide over some? You might need to yell in front of the crowd.
He should be the one kneeling.
Two rows, two rows. Hannah's going to pick up on the chair in the third row. For those of you who aren't familiar with the History Bowl and these type of competitions, the kids really do spend a lot of time preparing, and they do a great job. And again, Mr. Cooper, thank you for all your time and help with the program. So congratulations again. Okay, the next individual I'd like to recognize, Anthony Amato. Anthony, could you come on up here? He's been honored as a Hispanic Heritage Foundation National Youth Award winner. He is one of only eight high school seniors in the United States to win this prestigious award. So I'd like to congratulate Anthony for that. And is Brianna here? Brianna? Come on up, Brianna. So you've probably seen some notifications about Brianna. She's the finalist for the foundation in NASA's Mars Medical Challenge, and specifically your invention of the Blood Circulation Assistant, which is very impressive for a 9th grade student. So congratulations. And last, I'd like to recognize an individual who has really done a lot for the district in the last few years. Mr. Wing, would you come on up, please? So, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. I was going to say something. So a few years ago, Mr. Wing came to the district and said, you know, I'd really like to do some things to benefit the students in the district in the area of technology. And through that, we developed the district, initially the STEM Committee, and now it's transferred into the STEAM Committee. During those last few years, that committee's been running, it's been doing the 3D printing competition, and over the course of those years, Mr. Wing has donated over $40,000 to the district for STEAM initiatives, and he's helped out at the high school, and this year's been working at the middle school, and I know has contributed probably thousands of dollars at the elementary school to help with the robotics program. But what's really special about Mr. Wing's contributions is not only are they monetary, but he is going into the classrooms. He helped out in the after-school enrichment programs at Elsmere. You can see some photos of him up here working with kids, and even today, in the STEAM Committee meeting, he said in the 4th grade, "It's chaos." And of course, Mrs. Bonnequist clarified and said, "It's organized chaos." But he really is hands-on and really just looking to contribute and help promote science, technology, and math in our classrooms, and we can't thank him enough. So the small token that we can offer him is a plaque. So we'd like to give him this plaque, behalf of the school district. And we also, we have a duplicate plaque to hang in the technology room where he donated money and helped to renovate that classroom a couple of years ago. So I'd like to personally thank Mr. Wing for all of his efforts.
I just wanted to say one little thing. Working with 4th grade students is something that I haven't done for, since my kids were in 4th grade, which was a long time ago, but I appreciate the extra stretching that I got trying to fold myself down onto their chairs so that I could see out of my bifocals to actually give them a hand. But it's been, it's been fun for me to help at the elementary school level, the high school, and I'm looking forward to another year, year or two of activities with other programs and other schools, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. Thank you. Next is the Board of Education Report. Anyone like to report out anything?
Before Mr. Wing leaves, I want to stop you. I just want to say thank you for setting a good example of what philanthropy can do and how it benefits so many students in our community. It's just a great example, so thank you. Did you hear any of that?
Yes.
One of the reasons that I did this is because I've been fortunate financially, and it doesn't really take, it's only taken a little sliver out of my retirement funds. It doesn't take that much, and it is something I would like to see more people in my situation take advantage of, the opportunities.
So thank you. It's appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Well, I just wanted to add on The Wizard of Oz, the awards at Proctors. For anybody who's interested in going, it's going to be a great event with, I think, eight different school districts, Saturday, May 20, and hopefully Bethlehem will come out being a strong winner in those events, so. That was it for me.
What time is it on May 20?
I believe 7 o'clock.
Okay. Well, if you want to spend your whole day doing something, there's going to be a mental health summit. It's going to be held at the Holiday Inn in Latham, and it's being cosponsored by NISBA, by the Council of School Superintendents, by the School Administrators Association, PTA, and some, you know, psychological, psychology association groups. Mental health is a major issue, as we all know, and not just here, but all over, all over the state. So it would be great if some, you know, if people could go. You can see on the NISBA website, in fact, I think an email went out today about it, too, about attending it. So anyhow, just want to suggest that as, I know it's kind of tough in May to be, especially if the weather's nice, but it seems like it'd be something worthwhile going to.
And we also had Meet the Candidates Night last night, which was really great. We had eight strong candidates come out, and I got to be one of them. It was a nice event, and I think we're very lucky as a community to have so many qualified people to come be a part of our board next year, so I just wanted to say thank you for the event.
Okay, the other, another thing is, as has been noted in the newspaper, State Ed has presented to the state the revised state learning standards that were based on, by input from school board members, teachers, you know, professionals in education as opposed to what we had in the past. But there are hearings on this throughout the state, and the one that is in our area, which is the last one, is on Thursday, June 15. It'll be held at Questar III Administrative Center, which is just right off I-90. It's very convenient to attend, you know, 6:00 to 8:30 on that night, if anybody wants to have input into those learning standards. And, oh, I guess that's it.
I have one more.
Yep, sure.
Just, we have Pink Students here, so for any of you that have turned 18 this year, you are able to vote this year in our school board budget. So talk to your friends and come out and vote for the first time.
Don't forget to bring your ID.
And bring your ID. Good point.
Yes.
Charmaine and I were able to attend the middle school character breakfast last week, and as usual, it was a wonderful event, and it honors middle school students who show true character, and I just want to thank everybody who puts that together, and especially the students who show true character.
And also, thank the Lions again. They sponsored the breakfast for that morning.
Quanis.
Quanis. I always mix it up. I'm sorry about that, the Quanis, but they do a great job with that. The students are, you can just tell they're very excited that they've been nominated, and they're nominated by their teachers, who take the time to submit their names for that recognition. It's a great program that's been going on for several years in the middle school, and again, helps to build character and whatnot. One other thing is, June 1 is the annual meeting of the Kepler Area School Boards Association, so if anyone can attend that. I know myself, I'll be out of town that week, but it's the annual meeting where they'll be giving out the Grace MacGyver Award and also the Service Award. Each school district is allowed to submit a name to be, to recognize a student from each school district. And that evening, Dr. Iris Schwartz from the Assistant Commissioner of Education will be speaking, and he'll be discussing the Every Student Succeeds Act that evening. So reservations are due by May 18. So if you could let Brittany know, and she'll make the reservations on behalf of the board. Anyone else have anything else? Okay. Moving on is, next is our budget hearing, a presentation by Ms. Keel.
You're getting deja vu. We're going backwards. Here we go. Well, welcome. After many months of going through budget presentations, tonight is the final night of the overview. At the last meeting, the board adopted the budget, and we just want to do this executive summary so that everybody is aware of what is included in the budget as they hopefully head to the polls on our May vote. Of course, we focused everything that we're doing on the values of the district. Our goals and the programs that we implement are focused on helping us expand knowledge, improve character, and add value to all that we do. With the budget that we adopted, we have some low numbers to tout. The budget-to-budget expenditure increase is .6%, so under 1% at a total of $97.1 million. The tax levy is increasing .43%. So we're pleased that this is the third year in a row that we've been able to do that, thanks in part to some restored aid and just containment of our expenditures. We have looked at what we could restructure in the coming year on some of our programs. We made some reductions in some sections and some positions, but then we added in other areas. The net increase is only 2.85 full-time equivalent positions, so modest increase overall in Our total revenues at $97.1 million, the bulk of that is in the school tax levy. Again, that .43% yields an extra $275,000 to district funding sources, and that .43% is well below the maximum allowable tax levy, the Mattel of 1.31%. We did have an increase in state aid, both in the initial aid runs and then in the final proposal. We had an extra $330,000 that came to us in foundation aid, and then the other changes in state aid all fell within the reimbursable expenses that we submit to the state. Looking at it graphically, again, you can see school taxes comprise close to 2/3 of our funding sources, and with the balance, 1/3 in state aid and other miscellaneous sources. Remember that if you're looking for full detail on any of these numbers, go to the district's website, and we have detailed reports of both revenues and expenditures, as well as all of the prior presentations, with a great amount of information on each of the individual program areas. On the expenditure side, the total salaries increased slightly from the $48.6 million last year up to $49.8 this year. We actually were able to reduce the total amount of salaries from the baseline budget thanks to a number of retirements that were announced during the budget process, and that savings on salaries is what resulted in that decrease. Our fringe benefits are relatively stable. They actually decreased slightly going into the next year, thanks to reductions on our pension costs for the teachers' retirement system and the employees' retirement system, and all of the other areas were relatively flat. The equipment supplies and contractual increases reflect program additions that were discussed and decided through the various meetings. But again, with an increase of .6%, we're well below the rate of inflation. Again, graphically, you can see that salaries and fringe benefits are close to 75% of our total. We provide services, so that is what you would expect to see there. The next few slides are recap, area by area, of the different program modifications that were made. Some of these increases actually partially restore some of the reductions that had been made in prior years. Some of the reductions, again, were shifts based on changes in class sizes and shifts between the buildings, but we feel comfortable with the totals and the staffing changes, that that is adequate to meet the needs going forward. Again, each of the individual programs, if you go back, we'll have more information on that. I'm not going to read every single one of these items, but if you have questions on this, we can certainly respond to those later on. At the elementary school, some of the highlights on that were the addition of two elementary bus routes, and we had talked about that to reduce the ride times for some of our youngest students going out to Clarksville. And also, with the addition of a 1.0 for school counselor and social worker, we're hoping to better meet the needs of our students. And the certified behavior specialist also is in response to those needs. We're focusing a lot on helping the whole child. For the middle school highlights, while we had some reductions in some of the sections, there were additions in other areas as well. And you can see we had a number of equipment and software additions as well, the 3D printer use, additional training on Project Lead the Way, which focuses on some of the STEM initiatives and skills that those students will need. And at the high school, a number of different course changes, again, hoping to make it easier for the students to get into the requested courses that they were hoping for, some technology equipment additions, and some software purchases as well. Clubs that had been working on a volunteer basis over the last few years because of regular attendance and participation with the students, we have formally incorporated them as clubs into the budget next year. And in athletics, we have some assistant coaching positions for the sports that are listed that will be added next year. A unified bowling team will be a highlight for next year as well, and then there were some modest equipment increases. If you look at this slide, you can see the levy increases over the last few years, and as a comparison to the Mattel or the maximum allowable tax levy. The 2012-13 year that's highlighted was the first year that the tax cap regulations were in effect, and that was the only year that the district passed a budget that was challenging the tax cap. In all other years since then, we have been at or below that calculated maximum. The budget-to-budget increases also are listed there, and you can see they're fairly nominal. And we listed the level of community support for the purpose of offering a thank you, because we recognize that we have a fairly supportive community that takes the time to learn about the programs and give us input as we're developing the budget, and then does come out to the polls. Again, another graphical representation of the tax levy, and you can see we've been below that 1% level for the last three years. The question that a lot of people have is, all right, your levy is going up by .43%, but what does that translate into on the tax bills? These are very early estimates of the tax rates. The Town Assessors in Bethlehem and The town assessors in Bethlehem and New Scotland still have to go through their May grievance periods, where homeowners have the opportunity to perhaps have their assessments lowered, and there could be other changes going in on the rolls. We will have final rates for everybody in August. There was also a shift this year, for the first year in, I think, five or six years, where we had the equalization rates at 100 percent for both of the communities. Those rates are set by New York State Tax and Finance and Office of Real Property Tax Services, and that's based on how the sales in the community relate to the assessed values in the community. So, they apply those percentages as a way of making sure that if a community has assessed values that are lower on their rolls, that in fact, they can be adjusted so that they're unified throughout both communities, so that there's a fair sharing in the apportionment of the levy. Because of that shift, and because of about a $42 million growth in the assessment rolls in Bethlehem, that tax rate is actually expected to decrease when those rates are set in August. And based on that, if you have a $250,000 home, you will see a decrease of about $59 in the school tax portion of your bill. Remember that the library tax rates, although that will appear on the bill, is not reflected in these totals. For New Scotland, because the equalization rate reduced down to 98 percent, and because there was not a significant growth in assessments, there is a slight increase in that rate from last year to this year, and that would be about a $47 increase for a $250,000 home. Again, this year, the state is offering their property tax relief credit, so because the district has adopted a budget that is at or below the tax cap. If you are a homeowner that is eligible for the STAR tax benefit, if you've paid your school taxes last year, if you earn less than $275,000, you should see a check coming in the mail for $185. And the timing of that is to be determined. I know there was talk that they were going to do it earlier than last year. We'll see. Watch your mail, but don't start holding your breath. We always like to give a reminder of what the district has in its fund balance. The fund balance includes both the unrestricted or undesignated portion that we are able to use to cover cash flow and unanticipated events during the year that may arise. The vast majority of our fund balance are comprised of restricted reserves, and this chart shows what we believe those numbers will look like when we do the setting of the final tax rates in August. Right now, we are projecting a surplus of about $2.3 million for this fiscal year, and we would anticipate that that recommendation would be to fund the capital reserve. That will boost that to about $7.2 million as of the end of the year, but remember, as part of the propositions that were approved with the $32 million project, the $4.9 million balance that was there last year is going to be a source of financing for the $32 million project. So, that balance will drop down to the amount transferred in as of the end of the year, and then that would be available for future capital projects. The key percentage that we have to comply with is that undesignated fund balance of just under $3.8 million. As a percentage of next year's budget, the $97.1 million has to be at or below 4 percent, so we should be coming in around 3.9 percent with that. We also like to take a look forward. We go forward three years from the adopted budget, and we make some assumptions based on what we know at the time or what we might reasonably anticipate, and we look to see if there are any warning signs on the horizon. Once again, this year, you can see that slight shortfall on the very last line is what the projected shortfall might be on a $99 million budget or so. It's really a very small amount and something that we think we could easily address as we go through the budget process in those subsequent years. So, within the budget, we have reminders of what is included in there. The first is the Capital Outlay Program, which is sort of a mini-capital project. The district can spend up to $100,000 on a project in a single building that then gets submitted to New York State, and they reimburse us at our building aid rate. And within the budget, there's a line item for a transfer to the capital reserves that if the budget is approved, that will be the authorization for this project to occur, and this will be some upgrades and updates to the finishes and to the cabinets in the high school art rooms. We also will have a proposition to replace 15, or to purchase 15 buses. This is about 8 percent of the total fleet of buses, and this recommendation is based on the age and condition of the oldest buses. There are 13 large buses being replaced, and then based on student needs, where they're being transported to private placements outside of the district, we're requesting the addition of two small buses. Because it's a capital expenditure, both board and community authorization is required for us to purchase that. Again, not to exceed $1,595. We also, as Ms. Beck noted, we have eight candidates running for three seats on the school board, and the top three vote-getters will have three-year terms beginning July 1st, 2017. And now, it's time for the public hearing.
Okay, great. Tonight, we are holding the public hearing on our proposed budget as required by law. The notice of this hearing was published in the spotlight, and a copy of the proof of publication will be included within our official minutes. At this time, I invite any members of the public to speak who wish to offer up comments either for or against on the proposed budget. I ask that you state your name for the record prior to offering your remarks. Is there anybody who'd like to make a comment?
Hi, I'm Gillian Broder. Yeah. Okay, so, I just wanted to bring it to your attention about ordering a bunch of Chromebooks for the use at the, personal use at the high school and possibly the middle school. So, there, I just found several issues with this, and I would like to bring it to your attention. So, one of the things is, I found that it was, it would be rather hard to implement them in many classes, such as math, where, you know, you're writing a lot, and, you know, physical education and stuff like that. And knowing the people in my grade and, you know, witnessing this in tech classes and stuff like that, when students are given computers in a class, a lot of the time, they are not exactly paying attention and fooling around on the computer. And also, the Chromebooks are expensive, so I, oh, I had something else. And, yes, I just wanted to bring it to your, plus, any technological failures, which seem to happen rather often, could disrupt an entire class. So, and a lot of people I've spoken to are not big fans of this idea of Chromebooks. I, it was just put to my awareness that you've already ordered them, but I just wanted to say so. Thank you. Oh, and also, I just wanted to congratulate the seventh-grade Odyssey of the Mind teams for advancing to the world finals. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.[1418.01][1418.01][applause] Anyone else want to make any comments? Okay. Seeing there are no other comments, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The hearing is closed.
Thank you. And then, last but not least, the reminder to come out on May 16th. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. here at the high school gym A. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is, at this time, the board would recognize anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on an agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? No? Okay. Item number eight, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education discuss and approve the following finance action items, one through five.
Someone.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion?
Just thank you to the groups of making the donations.
Yes, yep. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? That item carries. Item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 10.
Someone.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That item carries. Item number 10, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through six.
Someone.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? That item carries. Other action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item, one through three.
Someone.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That item carries. At this time, the board would recognize anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item. Can be anyone? Please come up and state your name.
Good evening. My name...
Take it off.
Yep, sure. Sorry, things being tall. My name is Chris Meyer. I am a parent, also an alumni. I have a kindergartner. He loves it here, so thank you very, very much. I love this district. I'm coming to you just with a question that I've been hearing around and a concern, and I just wanted to address it. I know you can't probably respond to it, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that I am hearing this, and it's just a question. I'm hearing throughout the district a concern amongst many teachers that they're worried that absences are being looked at in terms of a disciplinary fashion now, in terms of teachers who may have sick children, or I can tell you from speaking to many, are just worried that the district is taking a much more aggressive approach on attendance policy and maybe looking to take, whether it be improvement plans or other actions towards teachers, simply because of their attendance. Now, if a teacher is found at Rivers Casino on the craps table, you know, I think we need to address that situation. If a parent is home with a sick kid who has the flu for a week because their kid has 103 fever, then my, I would never want that person to have to make that gut-wrenching choice of, do I stay home with my kid and endanger my employment, or hopefully, will the district, you know, understand what is going on? And I just wanted to just bring that to the attention. I know there's probably nothing you can say, and I'm not looking for a discussion. I just wanted to bring that out there, that it is out there, and it is a worry and a concern amongst many teachers in this district. I've heard it from them. I've heard it from parents, and I thank you for your time in letting me address that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Future meetings, our next meeting is on, well, Tuesday, May 16th is the annual vote from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. here at the high school. Immediately after that, we do have the results that are available. Anyone who'd like to come and watch as the polls are, the machines are locked down, we do an immediate tally of the votes and the outcome, so. The next is Wednesday, September, Wednesday, May 17th at 6:00 p.m. anticipated executive session with a 7:00 p.m. public board meeting. That is at Eagle Elementary. We look forward to visiting Eagle at our next Board of Education meeting. Then Thursday, May 18th, 4:30 p.m. is a faculty and staff retiree reception, where we'll be honoring this year's retirees. That's at the Norman Side Country Club. And then, the next Board of Education meeting will be Wednesday, June 7th at 5:30 p.m. with a 6:30 p.m. tenured teacher reception with a 7:00 p.m. regular board meeting. Anyone else have anything to add? And we have no need to adjourn to an executive session. I have a motion to adjourn.
Someone.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Don't forget to vote, May 16th.